I'm sorry, can I group calling Mary and Joe?
Joe, I think it's one more. You want to call Mary and you can't, but Joe wanted to.
Mary, is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know if I can pull that off.
My guess is Joe will be able to answer any question.
It's like level three phone stuff.
Yeah.
Certified the little two.
It is one o'clock Tuesday, June 17th. Madam Clerk, we have a form.
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Andrews' turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow with me. Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to serve you. And Father, we thank you for the mighty way in which you are working in our communities and holding us, Father, as a shining light in the region. Today, we ask for divine protection for our first responders. And Father, we are so thankful for all that you're doing for us in our community. Thank you, Father, for the generosity of people, Father, to those in need. And Father, let us remember each and every one of our neighbors to reach out so that, Father, we may know that what Jesus has called us to be is ambassadors, Father, to the world. Now, right now, we give you glory and honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Rule of the minutes, item four, any changes to that? I didn't see anything. I'll stand and approve as presented. Public comment, this is a time where the public can come forward and comment on any item that's not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and we ask that you state your name for the record. All right, moving on to item six.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim June 20th, 2025, as 6/20 Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Garden City, Kansas, has a rich history dating back to its founding in 1878. Originally a key hub for settlers moving west, it quickly grew due to the strategic location on the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe railways. Known for our diverse culture and agricultural capabilities, Garden City has become a vibrant culture and economic center in southwest Kansas. Last year, the city hosted the first inaugural 6/20 Day in Stevens Park to celebrate Garden City's unique heritage and the dynamic spirit of the 6/20 area code. There was great turnout, staff aimed to continue building on the tradition as the event grows bigger each year. This event honors the community's diverse backgrounds, fosters unity, and highlights what makes Garden City a cornerstone of Kansas' history and culture. The event intended to create a long-lasting tradition that show people's pride in Garden City's past, present, and future. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the proclamation as presented or the governing body may not approve the proclamation.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move you approve the proclamation as presented.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item?
Yeah, Aaron, could you talk about what you have planned for 6/20 Day?
Sure. So last year, we had, I believe, 30 different businesses and organizations at the event. This year, we have grown up to 36. We're really excited to be bringing on some new people. Phinney County and I have always been able to be there with Imagination Library books to hand out. D.V. Douglas sponsored Red Dog Children's Museum to be there. We've got food trucks, Exela Care. We're now a full hedge truck event as well for the community to come. We just, we really wanted to provide a fun, free opportunity for families and community members to just come together and celebrate what makes Garden City the best.
Well, you had a great turnout last year. It was packed, so that was, congratulations.
It's going to be very hot, so that is, that will be a trial, but it will be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Read the proclamation here or at the, at the event?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Proclamation, the proclamation reads, whereas the city of Garden City is proud to be a diverse, thriving community rooted in a rich history of agriculture, innovation, and cultural heritage, and whereas 6/20 Day serves as an opportunity to honor Garden City's past, present, celebrate its present, and inspire its future by bringing together residents, businesses, and visitors, and whereas the second annual 6/20 Day encourages community spirit by showcasing through traditions, cultures, and contributions that make Garden City a dynamic and welcoming home for all, and whereas Garden City continues to grow and prosper because of the hard work, dedication, and heart of its people, past and present, who shape its identity and future. And whereas by celebrating 6/20 Day, we aim to strengthen community bonds, promote civic engagement, and instill a deeper sense of pride among our residents. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the city of Garden City, do hereby proclaim June 20th, 2025, as 6/20 Day in Garden City, Kansas, and encourage all residents to join in the celebration and activities planned to reflect on our shared history and to take pride in the vibrant and dynamic community we have built together. Signed and sealed the 17th day of June 2025, Roy Cessna, Mayor. I'll come down and get a picture.
Wow. Wow. Okay, we took my three.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Aaron, quick question, is it, is there like a proper way to say this? 6/20, 6/20, 6/20?
I misspoke. It is 6/20 Day.
6/20 Day, okay. Just wanted to make sure, so thank you.
So they're saying it right then?
Yeah, you, yeah, yeah.
Item six B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for Boo at the Zoo, 2025. Christie, Sealan, whoever.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Governing body is asking to approve requests from Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for Boo at the Zoo, 2025. The requests are to close the zoo for the day of the event, October 18th, correct? And request to allow Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo to charge an admission fee for Boo at the zoo patrons. Since 1975, Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo have been committed to raising funds to support zoo improvements. One of the ways Friends raise, raises funds is by hosting special events such as Boo at the Zoo. Boo at the Zoo is the longest-running Friends event. It's in its 30th year. Is that correct? Okay. All proceeds from these events go towards zoo improvements such as the Primate Forest. The attached special event request form and Friends letter includes requests for assistance with the event, which are being addressed administratively. They also include requests to close the zoo for the day of the event, October 18th, for the event setup and charge the event attendees an admission fee. You have three alternatives. The governing body may approve the request to close the zoo for the day, for the event setup, and to charge event attendees an admission fee. Two, the governing body may modify the request, or three, the governing body may deny the request. Staff recommends that governing body approve the request as presented. The requests include specifically closing the zoo prior to the event. This will have limited effect on the gate revenue. Zoo staff will be on hand at all times during the setup, the event, and then the teardown for the safety and security of the zoo, as well as assistance with the event. This will result in some staff overtime. All proceeds from the event will support zoo improvements. I'm here, if you have any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the request to close the zoo the day of the event, for the event setup, and to charge event attendees an admission fee.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None, being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items seven A through seven G are all staff reports. Do you have any questions on those? Or comments?
Complaints look good. Keep going up each month, so.
I appreciate the police department's, that bulletin, it's much easier, it gives a really great snapshot, so I think it's really well-designed and gives lots of information.
Anything else? Okay, moving on.
All right, item eight is meetings of note. Any meetings on there requiring RSVPs? Please do those through, Sealan. Commissioner Ortiz asked at the last meeting about a potential tour of the animal shelter. I think the leading candidate for that is to double up the morning of a commission meeting, the workshop where we do the Fire Station Three grand opening, to double up where we maybe start over at the shelter, maybe start a little bit earlier than our normal 11 o'clock workshop time, start at 10:30. Do a tour with the Humane Society folks over at the shelter, and then move over to the ribbon-cutting grand opening of the fire station, and then do lunch there, and then make our way back over here for the one o'clock normal meeting time. So, to be determined, I don't think all the logistics of that have been finalized with all the parties yet, but that's sort of the leading candidate to do it in a time where we already know you have allocated your schedule towards city business.
Great.
So June 2nd possibility?
July 2nd.
We can certainly reach out and see if July 2nd is an option.
Was the date we were looking at, the one with?
That's July 1st.
Oh. So whatever the meeting next is what you're asking Commissioner Ortiz?
I don't have a calendar, I can pull up a calendar. The first meeting in July, I think, is the scheduled.
Is the first.
All right. Great. Any other questions?
Okay. Item nine is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2589-2025A.
I'm of the approved appropriation ordinance number 2589-2025A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None, being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Item 10, Commissioner Langrath will be stepping down on this item.
There's a couple of legal counsel for the developer and development counsel for the city. I'm gonna try to dial them in.
Hello?
Hi, Mary, this is Matt Allen. We're in the city commission meeting, and we've arrived at item 10A on the agenda, which is the Sports of the World Starbond Project consideration. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I'm also going to dial in Joe Oakes, so you may temporarily be offline, but I'll try to conference you in here in a second.
Okay, thanks.
Hello, this is Joe.
Hi, Joe, Matt Allen with the city of Garden City. We are in a city commission meeting and getting ready to start the agenda item related to the Sports of the World Starbond Project. Can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna try to conference in Mary, who I just called before you, so I'll check and make sure you both can hear me after I do that. Mary, can you hear me?
Yes.
Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution approving the execution of the development agreement with Stone Creek Station Foundation related to the Sports of the World Starbond Project. And if approved, it would be Resolution 3204-2025. Danielle?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. On November 20th, 2018, the city commission entered into an agreement with GC Investments to serve as master developer for the Starbond project, which was anticipated to be completed in two phases. On October 1st, 2024, the city commission approved Resolution 3130-2024, declaring official intent to issue Starbonds for Sports of the World Phase Two. This action was taken so the developers could at their own risk begin spending reimbursable funds on Phase Two. On February 18th, 2025, the city commission held a public hearing and approved ordinance 3007-2025 to expand the Starbond issue. And on June 3rd of this year, the city commission held another public hearing to approve ordinance number 3017-2025, approving the project plan amendment. The development agreement for Phase Two includes the following changes as it relates to the development agreement that was approved for Phase One. Obviously, it updates the timelines and scope of the project to capture what all is anticipated in Phase Two. It also extends the duration that the developer will be considered the master developer on the project from five years to 20 years for the property that is owned by the developer upon execution of the agreement. Upgrades the building code references, and in the first agreement that we had with the development team, there was a provision in there that allowed the city to purchase certain tracts of land. However, that provision was set to expire upon the certificate of occupancy for the refinery being provided. We are not quite to that point, but we're getting off the coast, so that permission has been removed from the agreement. This resolution would allow for the execution of the development agreement as substantially completed, and would also allow the city manager to engage with a financial professional to sell the Starbonds. The development agreement has been prepared by the City Bond Council, Mary Carson, and has been reviewed by the developer and their legal counsel. The project plan and bonds not to exceed amount is subject to final approval by the State of Kansas and the Department of Commerce, and the issuance of bonds will require future action by the governing body. So the two alternatives before you this afternoon are the governing body may approve Resolution Number 3204-2025 as presented, you may not approve the resolution as presented, and provide staff with alternative directions. Staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution as presented, and the fiscal note associated with this project is that if we get through all the necessary approvals by you all and the Kansas Department of Commerce, the city would issue special obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed that approved by the Department of Commerce. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have the developer here, any questions for them as well?
Yeah, Danielle, just for clarity, as you mentioned, that we would, we'd be subject to a final approval by the State of Kansas and the Department of Commerce. Is that just the Kansas Department of Commerce that we would be expecting final approval?
Yes, yes, we're waiting for a final approval letter from them.
Sure.
To be able to get to the point where we can issue those special obligation bonds.
So then after, after the resolution, when it's passed, or when, if it's passed, then it goes to the State of Kansas, and then the State of Kansas tells you how much they approve? And then at that point, is it then, then we sell the bonds and that goes on to like a, like a sale where Mary would offer them out and then they, they're offered to purchasers?
Yeah, the short answer is yes. So we have already submitted the request to the Department of Commerce for kind of this final letter. In that final letter, they are acknowledging the amended project plan, as well as including that not to exceed amount that showed up in the, in the project plan, and that has kind of been before, before you all, and shows up in the resolution as well. So they identify that number in the letter that they sent back to us. Then, yes, we can go through the process of actually issuing those special obligation bonds. And what this resolution allows us to do is something very similar to what we did for the first go-around, which is actually find a placement agent to help us place those bonds. So it's a little bit different than typical GO bond that we would do, or would kind of send it up to market. We would hire this financial expertise to come in and kind of do an analysis to say, does it make sense to do a special placement with these bonds, or does it make sense to go out to the full market? Starbonds are a little bit unique in terms of how they function, and so sometimes there's a benefit to trying to identify a pretty sophisticated buyer of those bonds, and can actually yield some better results. So they'll go through kind of that financial analysis, help us understand, does it make sense to place those bonds, or does it make sense to kind of hit the open market, if you will? And then that will come back before you all for final approval and consideration.
So as far as timeline, do you have an idea of the timeline? How much this is, would they be by the end of summer, or is it going to be sometime in the fall, or?
I would have to go back and look at our project calendar. I don't know if Mary or Joe may have that in front of them. I think the idea is to move fairly quickly, but anytime you're issuing bonds fairly quickly is a subjective term.
Mary, I'll give you first shot at that. If you didn't hear the question, the question is kind of the timeline of the remaining steps. So if you can identify the remaining steps and the, I guess, best guess timeline of when some of those things occur, at least the ones in our control.
Yeah, well, I would anticipate within the next several months, and you know, a lot depends on getting the, the placement agent or underwriter, depending on how things pan out with respect to the market, to starting, running numbers, seeking, you know, potential purchasers of the bonds, and comparing what a placement, private placement might look as opposed to a sale of the bonds. If there is a public sale of the bonds, we probably try to limit things to accredited investors, again, getting to what we were saying before about, you know, just making sure that they're in the hands of people who understand the security for the bonds. So that process will start, we will, you know, once we have an idea of where we're headed with the structure of the bond issue, we'll start drafting bond documents. During all that time, they'll be, you know, we'll be waiting for approval from Commerce, final sign-off with them, but, so I, you know, I would say three or four months if everything goes smoothly, the summer, early fall.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move you approve Resolution Number 3204-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Andrews seconded?
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this item? None, being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
And we'll wait for Commissioner Langrath to come back to the bench.
Joe and Mary, thanks for joining us by phone. The item passed, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twelve's A, twelve A is a 130 hearing, we'll come back to that. Item 12B, I better follow along here, just to make sure I don't skip something. Item 12B, is that the next item you have?
Yes.
Okay. Governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Garden City Partners One LLC.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. On February 7th, 2023, the city commission adopted Resolution 3001-2023, allowing the city to submit an application for moderate income housing project on behalf of Hawkeye Development LLC. The property is generally located at 1801 Palace Drive, and the developer was awarded $2 million in MIH ARPA funds and $1.2 million in Kansas Housing Investment Tax Credits. On April 20th, 2024, the city commission approved an agreement with Hawkeye Development LLC for the use of the MIH ARPA funds. And since that time, the scope of the project has changed. The initial scope included 62 units, but that has been modified to a 48-unit project that is anticipated to be a phase development. While this project has been scaled back, there is sufficient space on the property for future phase of the project that includes additional housing. It should be noted that the development team has also changed slightly. The original application named the development team as Hawkeye Development LLC. That has been updated to reflect the current development team, Garden City Partners One LLC, and identifies Arpa construction as the anticipated construction team related to the project. The amendment has been drafted by the city attorney and has been reviewed at this point by the development team. Two alternatives before you this afternoon, the first, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city of Garden City and Garden City Partners One LLC, or you may not authorize the signature of that First Amendment. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign that First Amendment, and there is no fiscal impact associated with doing so. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have one, just to clear things up, on the, on Exhibit B, it describes the MIH funds, or the KHITC funds as 1 million? Is that the correct number, or is the correct number the 1.2 million?
1.2 million.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that in making this amendment, that we don't put at risk any of the MIT funds, or MIH funds, or also the, the Kansas Housing Investment Tax Credits, those are not at risk at all?
Correct. So this project is a little unique. So when it comes to MIH projects, technically, the city of Garden City was actually the recipient of those grant funds. So we've been working with KHRC, and the next item before you is actually pretty much the exact same thing, but with KHRC, to reflect that they are also on board with the MIH ARPA funds being used towards this kind of new scope project. On the, on the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit side, the actual developer was the awardee for those dollars, and again, they've been working directly with KHRC in all of these meetings, so that they're well-versed and understand what's going on. I think in those conversations, their biggest point of emphasis is they want to see dirt moving related to the project here as quickly as possible. So we actually had a meeting with the development team yesterday to talk through kind of those final things that are needed, so that they can pull an excavation permit, start moving the dirt, while they can finalize the, the building plans related to it and get a building permit for it. So, yes, KHRC has been heavily involved in all of this, and they're well-aware of what's going on.
No, I appreciate, and I appreciate your answering the question in the sense that we want to make sure that we don't, these funds I know are highly competitive, and so getting these funds, it obviously speaks to the value of the project, and also, I think, the integrity of the people who are in the projects. And so, no, I just want to make sure that none of those funds are at risk, and so making sure that we move forward and really build some excellent housing for Garden City, so thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? None, being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
And Danielle mentioned the companion item, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
The background for this item is virtually the same, so with that, happy to answer any questions. The alternatives, again, governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, or you may not authorize the signature of that. Staff recommends you approve authorizing the signature of the agreement.
Any questions for Danielle? None, being? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, or you may not authorize the signature of that. Staff recommends you approve authorizing the signature of the agreement.
Any questions for Danielle? None, being? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None, being all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to the 1230?
Go back to 12A.
12A?
Yep.
This is a 130 public hearing. The government...
going on.
No, I appreciate, and I appreciate your answering the question in the sense that we want to make sure that we don't, these funds I know are highly competitive, and so getting these funds, it obviously speaks to the value of the project and also, I think, the integrity of the people who are in the projects. And so, no, I just want to make sure that none of those funds are at risk, and so making sure that we move forward and really build some excellent housing for Garden City. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and the Garden City Partners One LLC.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
And Danielle mentioned the companion item. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
The background for this item is virtually the same. So with that, happy to answer any questions. The alternatives, again, governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, or you may not authorize the signature of that. Staff recommends you approve authorizing the signature of the agreement.
Any questions for Danielle? None being? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Moderate-Income Housing Grant Agreement between the city and the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to the 1230.
Go back to 12A.
12A?
Yep.
This is a 130 public hearing. The governing body is asked to consider and approve abatement of nuisance conditions pursuant to Section 38, 139 of the Environmental Code of Ordinances.
I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Trent?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Before you today, we have an environmental nuisance case at 2017. We sent two letters out, one on February 28th, 2025, and one April 1st, 2025. Were originally asked for a two-week extension, which is granted. During the first week of the extension, there was a request to have fulfilled. And so we identified the homeowner who appeared here to speak on their behalf. The letter went out June 4th, 2025, voice facing at 1:30. The environmental nuisance code, according to Section 38, 137, prohibiting equipment and or personal property outside such as washers from being kept in the area to help safety and aesthetic concerns. The alternatives before you today, alternative number one, the governing body may approve the abatement of the nuisance conditions. Number two, the governing body may not approve the abatement of nuisance conditions. Staff recommendations, alternative number one. And fiscal note, abatement of costs incurred by the city will be charged against the lots or parcels on the ground which the environmental nuisance is located. And with that, I can stand three questions or elaborate if you wish, and then, like I said, without being on this here.
Sure. Would she like to come forward at this time?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Paula Flores, and I'm here on behalf of my sister-in-law, Hilda Flores. She has said the property mentioned, and she has requested that you not approve, I guess, abatement is what you would call it, because she doesn't feel it's a nuisance to the property. The picture that the city has attached to the agenda item can specifically shows that it's attached to the house, it's on the cement slab. So, and it's a working condition. She uses it for heavy items like things that she may wash for her doll that she has inside. So it's really not, she doesn't feel it's a nuisance to the property. If so, she feels that other property owners around her would make the same complaint. So I'm supposed to begin this?
Again, she doesn't feel it's in anybody's way. It's not disturbing anybody, and it's in working condition, and she does use it, uses it, uses it. But you can also see when she's not in use, she does keep it covered to protect it.
Yeah, thank you for coming. I was wondering if you could talk to the environmental piece of the ordinance and how it affects environmentally besides that it's not a nice word, but that it's more of an environmental issue.
Yeah, there's, well, there's several things that this falls into, refrigerators, coolers, washer dryers, entrapment. There've been, you know, situations where kids have been hurt by appliances outside. So it generalizes all equipment or all appliances. The other part is, is it's an interior designed product. It's not made for the exterior. So there's some concerns with the electrical components that are on it. Are there risks of being electrical shock or executed or any kind of connection with that? I don't know. It's just not made for that. Manufacturing instructions will have it on the interior portion of the house, not on the exterior. The aesthetic part is, is the appliance today is washer, and I understand, you know, the function of it for her, and no one wants to be in this situation, but it could be for anything. And we're here on a regular basis almost with different types of appliances that are left in your house. And so defining which would be appropriate, which would not, and then ultimately I'll go back to the manufacturer's instructions. How did they design it? If this was for consideration, we left on the outside, was it originally designed by the manufacturer to be safe for exterior conditions such as moisture, water, et cetera?
Any other questions?
Can it be, can it be moved inside? Well, I want to first say thank you for the letter. I think the letter, her personal letter was, that's, I really appreciate that. Can it be moved inside at all? Or is there a reason that there is not space inside? Or why is, why is it on the outside other than she uses it for heavy items?
She has a regular washer inside the house for her own personal use, so there's not enough space inside for another washer anywhere else.
Can it be moved to an exterior building? I don't know if that was her garage or?
She doesn't have a garage.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think what's, what's difficult is that it's an environmental issue of that there could be electrical hazards, water hazards during the summer. I would not be surprised if you could have pests and even other, could be rodents who kind of come up and eventually damage the house too, and that kind of creates more of a ripple effect. So that's just what's kind of hard for me at least.
Yeah, I appreciate her, the letter and then actually coming and appealing. And I mean, but again, this idea of not made for outside use, and then again, the dangers that it might represent. And, I mean, I really appreciate this idea, the thing that, you know, she's using it for, and if there was a way to store it, you know, someplace else when not in use, I mean, that might be an option. But unfortunately, the way it's currently being used is not according to the manufacturer specified guidelines, so.
I have, I just have a question for Trent if possible. And maybe, and maybe you guys had discussions or just don't know what those discussions were. Is there any possible solution of her maybe adding on to a little addition? I know she probably can't build a garage, but, you know, there's a lot of she sheds and he sheds out there that could probably incorporate a washer and dryer unit outside like that.
Yeah, maybe I had those discussions, but it's within the interior 90 degree portion of the roof, so I think it's worth that back, so it should be fine. We would want probably some roof and some floor or wall projected for it. And then I, I'm not on the property, so we want to make sure it's bonded properly as well.
Sure. And maybe there's, I mean, like I said, I don't know what the discussions were, but those options or solutions are helpful to an owner if they kind of understand what they're.
It looks like it's a patio or porch at some point in time that's all bald off now. I think it's definitely an option if she wants to pursue that, and we could work with her, but she could enclose this.
Okay. I think just, yeah, general conversations like that to maybe help resolve a solution like this or instead of the alternative, but appreciate it.
Does that make sense? At least we can have, there's a potential of enclosing it and maybe kind of having a solution for this.
It could possibly be an option, however, she's on a very limited income, and so it's very hard for her to do any kind of remodeling.
And I think if she could, I think if she speaks to Trent and his department and maybe try and figure out an alternative, maybe a cheaper solution of that sort, because it doesn't need to be a full, I mean, in my kind of vision, it doesn't need to be a full like house addition, but, and it doesn't probably possibly need to have an interior entrance to that room. So, but I would just encourage you to talk with the engineering department and see if there is some sort of solution for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Close the public hearing at this time. Entertain a motion on this item then.
Does this need an ordinance to it or is it just an abatement?
Just an abatement.
So does that mean removal or can she move it someplace else to preserve it in case she wants to enclose it? Or I was going to say that before.
I mean, if she removes it herself, then that's self-abatement issue, that's fine. The only part that we really didn't take into account is that there's a workaround with the enclosure of some form built on this. We could definitely work with her, however you decide to move on this. If it's abatement, we can see if we can get this remedy by enclosure, if she's able to make that happen. If not, if you choose to abate it, we can afford to get there.
I would say there's similar examples in the past where the commission has resolved that the current state, they aren't acceptable.
Right.
They're not accepting. So it's going to change by virtue of abatement or some other solution. But when there's an opportunity to do a solution that's maybe a little bit more palatable for the property owner, we've, we've stayed the, the abatement action for a period of time, we could say like 30 days or something of that nature. Now, if, if, you could also vote that you're okay with this condition and, and not approve the abatement. But if you approved the abatement and said, and staff, we'd like you to extend out for a period of 30 days or, or some number of days, the, the abatement of it to see if you can work out an alternative with, with the property owner. I think there's a history of the commission doing that in the past, maybe not with the specific same facts, but something where the property owner shows, you know, a desire to comply. I mean, it's not like it's just laying in the middle of the yard. You know, she's asking you for to consider this, not to be a violation of the code. If you would say, well, we believe it's a violation of the code, but we're willing to work with you for a while to see if we can find some mutually agreeable solution, we could do that. And it gives us enough time too, that we could come back to another meeting. If we had something where it was kind of eh in between, we could, you know, gauge your opinion as to whether or not that solution would work.
So is the washer still there then?
Paula, is, would 30 days be enough to work with staff to see if we can come either to a self-abatement where you guys move the washer yourselves or have some sort of other solution? Would 30 days be enough?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Don't, don't leave though. Any other questions? All right. Entertain a motion on this item.
So I'm going to need you guys to kind of help me make sure I craft this well. I move we approve the abatement after 30 days of working with staff and, yeah.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exchange contact, well, you guys probably have already exchanged contact information. Thank you. Moving on to 12D.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the bid from MB Companies, Inc. in the amount of $864,540.46 for the acquisition of snow removal equipment for the Garden City Regional Airport. This is AIP 3-2-0-0-2-4-0-5-1-2025, for those playing at home. Rochelle?
Good afternoon. It is grant season, so we're discussing AIP 51 in short. We bid out a piece of equipment. There was two bid options. Base bid A is an airport-specific snow removal piece of equipment with a plow as well as a broom head on it. And then base bid B was like a hook lift style truck that had multiple functions. We received one bid on base bid A, which is an airport-specific truck snow removal piece of equipment, and it was provided by a sole source provider, an airport snow removal equipment manufacturers. We did not receive a bid on base bid B. However, we can re-bid that next grant season, which would be next year. With that, there's additional documentation from HNTV, which is our engineering firm that provides all the FAA requirements as far as the AIP process goes. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, your alternatives are to approve the bid, to not approve the bid, or provide guidance to staff. The cost is fairly substantial. However, the FAA pays 95%. The city pays 5% of that, and the city share comes from the KFC passenger facility charges that we collect from the airline.
Any questions for Rochelle?
No, just a comment. I have a new respect for the amount of paperwork, just to get, I was shocked at the documentation just for this award, so thank you for all that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the bid from MB Companies incorporating the amount of $864,540.46 for the acquisition of snow removal equipment from the, for the Garden City Regional Airport Improvement Plan, the API Number 3-20-0-0-2-4-0-5-1-2025.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12E. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the HNTV Task Order Number One Taxiway A Design for the Garden City Regional Airport, and this would be AIP 49 in the amount of
HNTV is our engineer of record. We initiated that recently for the master agreement. Task Order Number One is the first product under that master agreement, which is a design of taxiway Alpha from the apron to the intersection of runway 1230. And the fees are associated with that. The FAA does require if a engineering design is over $100,000, we get an infinite fee estimate, so we acquired that from Hadel Service at AIP LLC Services, and his information is included, and also finds HNTV's fee reasonable for the design of the taxiway section. The options are to approve a task order number one, to not approve it, provide guidance to staff. This project as well is paid 95% by the federal government, 5% of city funds, and the city funds are also paid for through the passenger facility charges that we collect from the airline.
Any questions for Rochelle on this item?
I don't want to really kind of open this can of worms, but kind of just a shallow dive. So if, in our pre-meeting, we were talking about the PFCs helping going towards the airport parking lot and the portion of that. So in here, usually we use five, our 5% portion is through the PFC. So if we were to use all of the PFCs for the airport parking lot, if we were to apply for an AIP, we would have to look at other funding mechanisms for that, right?
Yeah, that is correct. Even splitting the PFCs between the AIPs as well as the parking lot would put a shortage on both projects essentially. And next year, we have the construction of this taxiway, which is off the top of my head, roughly $3.2 million. So 5% of that is coming from your PFCs, and if you're also splitting that into a parking lot, we start to run out of money. So other funding sources, city budget will have to come into play somewhere to pay for these projects.
Gotcha.
So parking lots would not be approved for the 95, 5% split?
It is eligible for the AIP project, however, it ranks very, very low on the priority scale for the FAA. The priority is infrastructure, airfield construction, infrastructure, taxways, runways, fire equipment, snow removal equipment. So it's at the very, very bottom. Unfortunately, we have a five-year, 10-year, 20-year CIP, ACAT coming out, and that parking lot just keeps getting bumped further and further down. I think it's 20 years at this point, just because we have some of the other infrastructure to support the airport at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rochelle? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move you approve alternative number one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a contract renewal with Motorola Solutions for in-car and body-worn camera systems for the Garden City Police Department.
Good afternoon, this is Mayor, Commissioners. What you have before you is you're being asked to consider and approve a contract renewal with Motorola Solutions for in-car and body-worn camera systems for the Garden City Police Department. The city commission authorized a five-year agreement with Motorola in 2017 for body-worn and in-car cameras. During that agreement period, Motorola acquired WatchGuard, which previously specialized in equipment for in-car cameras, and as a result, a change order was approved in mid-2020 to switch the in-car cameras to new technology. The current agreement is set to expire later this year, and as a result, staff is recommending renewing the agreement with Motorola for an additional five-year term. This renewal includes 48 Motorola M500 in-car camera systems, 64 V700 body-worn cameras, and two interview room systems, all of which feature upgraded hardware and enhanced capabilities. Each in-car unit will be equipped with integrated license plate reader technology, providing immediate management to officers during traffic and investigative stops. This agreement includes an equipment refresh at two and a half years, ensuring that our body camera technology remains up to date moving life of the agreement. Package also includes unlimited cloud storage, eliminating data caps, and simplifying digital evidence management. Importantly, renewing with Motorola allows the department to avoid significant expenses associated with migrating data to a new system or operating parallel systems to preserve legacy video evidence. Such alternatives would carry considerable costs and operational inefficiencies. Staying with Motorola ensures full continuity of service while leveraging modern capabilities and reducing long-term expenses. The financial structure of the renewal includes an upfront investment of $214,000, I'm sorry, $214,000, that number there. $214,035.82 in year one for hardware accessories and implementation, followed by annual subscription costs of $109,047.42 for years two through five. The total cost of the five-year agreement is $650,000. This includes not only new equipment, but also data storage, backend management tools, training, and support services. If the agreement is approved, we anticipate the first-year cost to incur in the 2025 budget. There's a chart that lines out what the upfront costs and then years two through five costs are. If you have any questions on any of that stuff, I can try to answer it, but it's explained pretty in detail in the contract. Alternatives before you, the governing body may approve the contract renewal with Motorola Solutions for in-car and body-worn camera systems, or the governing body may not approve the renewal of the contract with Motorola Solutions for in-car and body-worn camera systems and provide further guidance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the contract renewal with Motorola Solutions for in-car and body-worn camera systems. And as a fiscal note, in 2025, GCPD revised budget includes the following for in-car and body-worn camera systems: $96,800 in maintenance contracts, $150,000 in new equipment other, for a total of $246,800. The first year, again, the first year costs for this agreement are $214,358.2, and that will come from those budget line items. The remainder of that money in those line items will be used to cover the costs for outfitting and installation of the new equipment for JR Audio. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, what are you doing with the old equipment if you're switching out with new equipment?
So, there's a couple of different-
Do you use it, or?
There's a couple of different options. If there's agencies that don't have systems, then we can transfer that. It's old technology, so a lot of times what will happen is there's agencies that are using the current systems that we have, and sometimes they need parts to make theirs just last a little bit longer. We've run into that as well, so that's usually what happens with that. It's just kind of a handshake deal, and we have to work through that. It's old technology, so it can't be transferred to somebody with any intent.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know if they could, if they refunded it or if they took it back, and so. And I appreciate the short conversation we had, considering the quality of the Motorola and with the upgrades, because I knew when we originally did this several years ago, there were some issues with the car cameras. You know, and so I know that that's been improved now, and so I really appreciate that, because, again, this is a considerable safety mechanism, not only for you, but also for the public. And so, I mean, I think these are dollars, and your research was, you know, well done and so well spent, so thank you.
Any other questions for Chief?
I kind of just had one, and I think, I was trying to look for it last night, but I didn't really see it. If we can incorporate in the contract stating that we have the 2.5 upgrade refresh? Is it, okay. I think that's the only thing I had that I couldn't find, but if it's in there, then that's good for me.
Entertain a motion on this item then.
I move to approve the contract renewal with Motorola Solutions for in-car and body-worn camera systems.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Item 12H, the governing body is asked to consider and, oh, I'm sorry, 12G. The governing body is asked to consider providing the staff direction regarding the next steps for making an amendment to the Code of Ordinances of zoning regulations to allow for indoor smoking and cigar lounges.
Good afternoon. Roman's side has requested to amend the Code of Ordinances and the zoning regulations to allow for indoor smoking and cigar lounges. The current city Code of Ordinances prohibits indoor smoking, and Garden City zoning regulations do not specifically have a use or definition for cigar lounges. According to KS 21-6110, there are 11 exceptions to the indoor smoking ban under state law. A list has been included in the attachments. The city has adopted two of the exceptions according to Code Section 62-2124, which is also included in the attachments. In order for this business to operate, the city commission would have to amend our local code to include a third exception for tobacco shops. Additionally, cigar and tobacco shops are permitted use within the C2 general commercial district and the C3 central business district, which allows for the sale of tobacco products, but does not speak to the onsite consumption of tobacco products. As a result, the Garden City zoning regulations would need to be amended to allow for onsite consumption. There are four alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may direct staff to proceed with amending the Code of Ordinances and zoning regulations, which would go to the planning commission prior to coming back to the city commission. Two, the governing body may direct staff to proceed with amending the Code of Ordinances and zoning regulations, which would go to the planning commission prior to coming back to the city commission, and ask the community health advisory board to review the proposal. Three, the governing body may direct staff to not proceed with the proposed amendments. And four, the governing body may provide alternative direction, and staff has no recommendations.
Roman here?
I am.
Would you want to speak a little bit about kind of why you're wanting to do this? And look at, you know?
No, I am a cigar enthusiast, I'm by far not an aficionado by any stretch of the imagination. However, one of the things my wife and I like to do when we travel is we look for cigar lounges, and it's just a place to enjoy. I enjoy a good cigar, sitting back relaxing, it's a relaxing atmosphere, it's a place where business people congregate, and they talk business, they talk deals, they give advice, things like that. These are just things that I like, it's, I'm not involved, I'm not interested in opening a bar, I'm not interested in anything like that, loud music, nothing like that. This is just something, a place to congregate fellowship, that kind of thing, over something as simple as a cigar. A lot of good conversations I've seen and had have been over, "Oh, what are you smoking? That smells wonderful," that type of thing, pipe smoke, that kind of thing. I'm not interested in cigarettes, I'm not interested in bays, nothing like that. I feel like something like that would enhance downtown with your, with the vision of the downtown vision of an evening life, not necessarily a nightlife type of thing, but something a little more than just normal business hour, daytime stuff. I feel it would enhance that and give an option for people that may like to do that outside of their homes.
Any questions?
Well, I did ask Daniel, because I know that some questions, and I really appreciated the answers, and unfortunately, I've not had time to review as much. So, the thing, I know that, you know, we do have the Clean Indoor Air Act, and so I wanted to make sure that we're being very careful about if we make this exception or if we add this on, that it doesn't impact, like, all of a sudden, now you can smoke in restaurants and bars and anywhere else you want to. So, that was a question I wanted to make sure and ask, and so they did that. And I didn't realize, I was always, I didn't know how the casinos, except the state does things that basically they can do anything they want. But the state does things that, you know, I mean, a lot of the cities don't do, and so I was curious about, you know, how that expands. I mean, so if you open the cigar lounge, does that mean you can expand into other, you know, things, like you said, like the cigarette smoking and all the vaping and all that kind of stuff? Or is it just you have to stay with your original intent for a cigar lounge? That's what I was wanting to make sure I understand, so.
As I understand it, about the only thing that I can do outside of that, I can open the cigar lounge. Now, the state, as I have read the state ordinances or the state statutes and such, I believe they could be opened up to cigarettes, it could be opened up to bays and stuff like that. That is not my intention at all. I don't like those things in any way. It seems kind of odd that, I like cigars, but I don't like those things. But that is not my intention. I like the cigar atmosphere, pipes would be the only exception, pipe smoke, that kind of thing. And again, like I said, I do not have any intentions of opening a bar. We have plenty of those that do their own brand of business. I mean, if the option were there, which it is not through the state, would be something like a whiskey bar, whiskey cigar bar, but that is not allowed by the state.
Right, then you'd have to do, so if we, so if the ordinance is amended to include this, does that mean anybody else can open them up, or do they always have to come before the city commission? Or then, basically, once it's open, it's open and you can open them within a C2 and C3 district? Is that how that works, John? I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for your information, I really appreciate it.
How it would work is you can direct us as staff to make that amendment to C3 and C2 if you choose any workers proposing this in C2.
Okay.
So, that would be up to you if you want us to make that amendment to allow in C2 and C3 districts, we can do that.
I mean, I appreciate Roman's intent, and also his, you know, you being very candid about what your purpose is, and I think that's, you know, I mean, that would be okay, but I'm saying if we open it up, all of a sudden, it's not just you, but it's several other people, and with this indoor air. You know, I was in Missouri recently, and all of a sudden, someone asked me, "Do you want smoking or non-smoking?" And I was like, I didn't even know that existed anymore, so I was shocked. So, I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, making sure that we're treating everyone fairly, and I know the Indoor Air Act was extremely controversial and hard to get passed. And so, you know, as we open it up or lax it, or, you know, you add additional exemptions, exceptions, I do, that I think it does weaken that in thinking about. But I do appreciate your, and that you're a business owner, and I love entrepreneurs, I think that's awesome that you, and good conversation, that's always fun, so.
Any other questions?
If I might add, I apologize.
You need to stand up to the mic, please.
Yeah, sorry. If I might add, there is, and it is wholly up to you, but it is solely my intention as well, that it would not just be a room full of smoke. There would be air purification, hepa filtration, air exchange also with that, which you could also mandate within the ordinance code, saying that if you open a lounge or a smoking lounge or what have you, that you do have these air purification systems in place. And there is recommendation, I can't, off the top of my head, I do not have those. What size per, it's based on square footage, that kind of thing, of what you would have. But there are, but there is that option as well.
Yeah, I like that, thank you for being open about that, that's an option for us.
So, our option, Alicia, our option to send it to, because this would change how we would, the zoning in those districts, it would have to go to the planning commission to get their approval, either way, correct?
That is correct. It would just for the amendment to the zoning regulation, what gets amended to the Code of Ordinances would just be for the governing body.
Gotcha. So, does that mean, so if we'd want to, if we want to say that, you know, so they could open this, but with the requirement that there is some type of air purification, or for, or does that, is that something that's basically not, you're not able to do that, or?
I think you-
Yeah, I think he would do that, but I'm saying, I mean, I don't know if you want to require that or not, so.
Jen, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. I think you could put maybe that in the Code of Ordinances. I don't know that's necessarily something you would need to put in the zoning regulations.
So, we can always write our ordinances to be more strict than state law, we just can't be more lenient. So, if you're creating, and if you're going with an exception, and then you're kind of pulling that back, we could definitely create some language that had additional requirements in it. But if you just went with the exception, as it is under state law, you would be opening it without any other restrictions. Does that make sense?
Yes, Trent?
I just, part of the conversation, just wanted you to be aware of, in the adopted mechanical code, we have ventilation requirements for smoking lounges. I don't know if we need to write that.
Okay, okay, good.
Referenced.
Okay, great.
Any other questions on this item? Entertain a motion on this item then.
I move we direct staff to proceed with amending the Code of Ordinances and zoning regulations, which would go to the planning commission prior to coming back to the city commission, which is alternative one.
There's been a motion for alternative one, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Nay, that item passed. Thank you.
Item 12H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a lease agreement with Finney County that would allow Finney County Emergency Medical Services to lease a portion of the new Station 3 facility for operations.
Good morning, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. As part of the development of Station 3, a designated portion of that facility was designed to accommodate Finney County EMS. The collaboration of use of this space supports the joint mission of providing timely and efficient effective emergency response services to the community. The lease agreement outlines the terms of the arrangement. Most carefully, Finney County will not pay rent until 2033 pursuant to the 2017 sales tax and enrollment program. At the conclusion of the sales tax collection, the city will open a county will enter into a new agreement or amend the current agreement to reflect the annual rent payment. The agreement has been reviewed by legal counsel in alliance with the city's strategic goal for inter-agency cooperation and effective use of public facilities. The alternative for you, the governing body may approve the lease agreement as substantially completed, allowing Finney County Emergency Medical Services to occupy the designated portion of Station 3 under their agreed upon terms. Terms two, the governing, everybody may approve the lease agreement as substantially completed, allowing Finney County Emergency Medical Services to occupy the designated portion of Station 3 under their agreed upon terms and provide further guidance. Recommendation, staff recommends the governing body approve the lease agreement as substantially completed, allowing Finney County Emergency Medical Services to occupy the designated portions of Station 3 under their agreed upon terms. Plus, we'll note, there are no rent income from the lease until mid-2033. However, the utilities and maintenance and service will be split 70% city and 30% county to reflect the portion of the facility utilized by public agencies. The lease does not create additional expenses for the city and supports border goals of public safety cooperation. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief? On this item, entertain a motion then for this item.
I move that we approve that perceived the amending, whoops, sorry, wrong one, somebody else has to do it. I had the coordinate one that's up there.
I move we approve the lease agreement as presented, allowing Finney County Emergency Medical Services to occupy the designated portion of Station 3 under the agreed upon terms.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That item passed. Thank you, Chief.
I was thinking, they could have bargained like 50/50, but you know.
Item 13 is the consent agenda. Commissioner Andrew, you indicated you wanted to pull item 13D off and talk about that separately?
Yep, just to get some information.
And then, that would leave item 13A through C and 13E through N as the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda 13A through C and 13E through N.
There's been a motion to approve 13A through C and 13E through N. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 13D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the First Amendment to the Personnel Sharing Agreement between the City of Garden City and the City of Scott City for interim police chief services. Chief?
Paul, for the first go.
Daniel.
And then, if you can answer any questions. Um, back in January 7th of this year, the commission approved an agreement between the city and Scott City, just as with their vacant, uh, police chief position. Uh, at that time, an agreement was outlined, uh, the roles and responsibilities of both agencies, uh, for an initial three-year term with the ability to extend that in three-year increments, um, moving forward. Um, so back in April, you all got kind of the first request to extend the agreement. At that point in time, uh, Scott City was at the beginning phases of getting that application and kind of profile out, um, and were in the early stages of that. They went through kind of their initial round of, uh, reviewing applications, interviews, that type of thing, um, and were getting, uh, further along the process of one of their candidates, when they got notification that that candidate actually withdrew that application from the process. Um, so Scott City has gone back out, um, and currently has their police chief position posted. Um, it is slated to have first review of applications, I want to say July 2nd, um, so coming up here in the next couple of weeks. Captain Oaks has, uh, so far been the person who has fulfilled that capacity as an interim police chief for, uh, Scott City. Now that he has been doing that for six months, he has worked through quite a bit of his vacation time, um, and has, uh, we need him, we need him back here. Uh, however, we're still able to help kind of fill that need, um, and help Scott City with Lieutenant Roush. So this agreement is actually to, uh, allow Lieutenant Roush to take that position in an interim capacity. Obviously, it'll be a bit of a transition period if you all are supportive of, uh, moving forward with another three-year term between-
You mean, three-month term, or?
Yeah, three months.
Three months, yeah, I was like, three-year, I was like, wow?
Um, while they go through the process again. And we, Chief is here too, and I know he'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of an update of, of where they are in their, in their process, and why this agreement looks a little bit different, and we've identified Lieutenant Roush to step up in that capacity.
So Chief, how's it working for them up there and then us down here, so?
Um, so I'm going to talk in, in general about them up there, uh, because I, I talk to EJ probably on a daily basis, uh, he's, uh, they, they've done really well in filling slots that they had open, and getting through some of that stuff, and EJ's done a great job of, of helping with that. Uh, they, they plan to get through their, uh, application process and then hold their assessment center mid-July timeframe, and, uh, right now, I think, I know that, just like us, they would like to have a chief in place, uh, first of August or thereabouts, and so, they're working through it, it's just, it's one of those things, it's a very difficult position to fill, but, um, we're happy to help, we always have been happy to help, um, and we have the capacity to do that, and I, I absolutely support helping.
Are we still doing the, the, uh, the call center, is that still coming through Garden City? The, um, dispatch, or is that, do they have their own dispatching?
They have their own dispatch.
Okay.
Yes.
So they have their own dispatch, and so he's been helping fill officer positions, and now they're just waiting on the top position of the police chief?
So both officer and dispatchers, he's hired, he's been able to fill some of those, so he's, he's done a good job of making sure that they get the thinking.
Great. Thank you for the information, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Chief on this item? None being, entertain a motion on, uh, 13D.
I move that we approve the three-month extension and the First Amendment to the agreement.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. That concludes the business items for today's meeting, and I think we're ready for commissioner reports.
Commissioner Andrew.
Yeah, so I really appreciate all the work that Jared did, putting all the information together on the CIP projects, and, you know, there are so many, it was very hard to choose, there are so many projects that, I mean, you know, the city could really use, and I think are really have a lot of merit and have a lot of value, but, so I know a lot of work has gone into this, not only from the city side and the city commission side, but also the public, and so, I really appreciate that, I just want to recognize that work and, and say thank you for it, um, as we move forward over the next, next year and the next budget season. Um, also, I really appreciate, uh, Hilda coming forward and, you know, writing the letter, I mean, that's not ever easy, and then coming in and making a case, you know, that's the thing I really appreciate about Garden City, and hopefully, that we're friendly enough and that you, you feel that you can come anytime you want to, make, make a request before the city commission, I mean, that's really what we're here for, and so, I really appreciated that. The airport, I, you know, I know, um, Mayor Sessner talked about the airport, I mean, we are going to set record numbers this year, and so, I really, I visited another airport recently, and, um, man, we are blessed, that's all, that's all I can say, I mean, it was a smaller airport, and as I walked through, and of course, a lot of them were saying like, well, it's, it, you know, they make comparison like, well, it's not like, you know, Garden City, and I was like, I can't, I didn't say anything. I just honored them, so I really want to say thank you to the airport staff, and just the cleanliness of our airport, and just the overall, um, the grounds are really, really nice. I really appreciate the end of the, um, we were on a bike trip, so we didn't get to do, we did some of the, some of the things on, um, the last of Friday, so, uh, Beef Empire days, but I know the other part went really great, and so I really appreciate all of the work that goes into the events that happen in Garden City. I know that all the volunteer hours are tremendous, and that people are so willing to step up and volunteer makes a big difference. So I want to say finally, just thank you to each and every one of the advisory groups, I know with a lot of the information you get, it's a lot, but the decisions that you make really help inform the commission, and I just wanted to say thank you for that work, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Lynn, go ahead.
So, I just want to second what Commissioner Andrew said regarding the pre-meeting, it's nice, I know it was a second part of the meeting, but it's nice being able to get all that information down, and also being able to discuss with everyone our ideas and what we think for the future for the CIP projects. Also, just want to say it was great having the League of Kansas Municipalities in town for the city forum. I just want to say, first off, it was a great idea by Mayor Sessner to have a tour of Garden City for all of these people, and just heard so many just wonderful comments about Garden City from city leaders. One of the comments I heard someone say was, your city's just so clean, so it's cool I see, hearing that from other city leaders. And also, one of the items that was discussed at the forum was youth engagement, so then seeing in our goals, it was nice seeing the update on the commission's goal for youth leadership engagement. I think the plans there are really tremendous, I really hope that they end up being achieved, because I think being able to talk with, um, high school students and younger individuals, being able for them to see the city commission going on, kind of see how the city government goes and works, I think that's really important for the future. So, just those two items.
Thank you. Commissioner Winn?
Yeah, quiet two weeks, thankfully. I would just really like to invite everyone to the 6:20 day, starts at 11 this Friday, and I'm so stoked and so excited for that. Sad, kind of sad that I'm not on the Peron Action team this summer, our, our missionary crew for, um, the Dot City Diocese, but I'm grateful that they sent invitation for me to join them and learn it the rest of the week, and then all week next week in Scott City, so we'll be out in the sun and laboring away to also make those communities look a lot better, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz?
Um, yeah, I did participate in the League of Kansas Municipalities City Forum tour, and it was an amazing time, um, the positivity that we got from feedback from, uh, people not living in Garden City and Finney County was, was pretty awesome, um, was pretty awesome to hear. And I did, I was going to bring up, too, the fact that their youth leadership program, the mayor of Atchison actually brought it up, that they host their city commission meeting at the high school, uh, during school, so that the kids don't have to get dismissed out of school, but then it's presented to them in a form that they can all be there at one time as sort of an assembly, which I thought would be a great idea for Garden City to maybe copycat that at some point, that would be a pretty awesome experience for us and, uh, the students at Garden City High School, so, and for anybody else?
Definitely the most well-attended commission meeting.
Yes, let's, let's break the record, I'm for that, so, um, but yes, it was some great discussions and things, and, and yet, we still talk about how the city of Garden City is growing, um, but I also am aware that we are not the only ones growing, our, our surrounding communities are growing as well, so, um, Kearney County, uh, Scott City, uh, you got even Liberal and Dodge City, they're, they're, uh, growing in numbers, too, so, um, seeing the presentation from Shannon at the forum as well was, was an eye-opener again, he presented some new information, um, so it was pretty awesome to see that we are growing as Southwest Kansas, not just Finney County, so, um, we are going to hit a little bit of, of growing pains, and so I ask that we just be patient, right now we have city crews, street and traffic going out painting lines, so, um, just be cautious of that, but, other than that, I don't have anything else on my report, so I thank everybody for listening in.
Thank you. Um, just following up, um, again, a good pre-meeting, uh, providing staff a direction on the CIP or capital improvement projects, uh, to help with the budgeting process. I kind of like the, uh, the diagram that Matt Allen showed us on how it kind of operates, and, uh, sometimes it's kind of true when you're in that decision-making process, it's kind of all over the place, but, you know, we kind of come together as a, as a group, and, uh, we hammered out kind of the top 10, eight to 10 areas that we need to really focus on, uh, helping to improve the community. Just also following up, um, I did hear a lot of, uh, positive comments from all of the board members from the League of Kansas Municipalities, um, actually, they were asking and saying we should probably do this at some other, uh, locations that we, uh, travel to when we do move board meetings around, uh, the state, so, that might be on the, uh, horizon, but, uh, a lot of positive comments, not only from, um, the board members, but also from other, uh, communities, uh, that attended the forum as well, uh, very positive about our community and about the tour, and, uh, all the great things that we're doing here in Garden City. Also wanted to mention, uh, kind of like, uh, Commissioner Ortiz, there are a lot of[1763.04]